Operation. Back in session, Town Council, February 20th. And we will pick up where we left off. I'm glad Mr. Singleton could make it just in the nick of time for this particular item. And we will now move to what was item one that we moved down, and that's the voluntary satellite annexation related to All-Star Mobile Home Park. And I believe Mr. Trezenberg will be our presenter on this one.
Yes, I will. Yes, thank you again, Mr. Mayor, council members, folks from the public. This is ANX 2307, annexation request satellite for All-Star Mobile Home Park off of Simpkins Road. The owner and petitioner in this case is an entity called ACG All-Star LLC. This is a satellite request. Our nearest primary corporate limits are over here in Georgia's Landing, so it's not far, but it's not immediately adjacent either. The property is just a little over 72 acres, and the Mobile Home Park requested the annexation because they would like to connect to the public water system. I'm not aware that they have any issues currently with septic, but the water is something that they are interested in connecting to. So again, as mentioned, when you measure this out, there is Georgia's Landing installed water lines here across their frontage, so it is about 650 feet or so to the Mobile Home Park's main entrance to get it to their property. The satellite annexation petition does talk more about the consistency of services that the town provides and if it would impact those services and our ability to offer them at the same levels as we do the rest of the town. So just a quick kind of survey of folks. The refuse collection would continue to be handled with their private dumpster service, so there would be no major impacts there from Public Works. And additionally, there's not any public streets in the Mobile Home Park, so nothing that would require public maintenance. In terms of permitting, since the site is already built out, there's not a lot that would have to be done that would affect the Development Services Departments. But, you know, things like when a home would be moved in and out, there would be some basic permitting required with that, but nothing extensive. There, we do estimate that there are probably about 510 residents within the park, just using census data averages. There hasn't been an actual survey of the park itself, so that would be a shift of residents to in-town versus from out of town to in-town for purposes of Parks and Rec. Police response, though, is probably the one that could be impacted the most. In terms of, we did pull some incident reporting data over the last three years, 2020 to 2022. We don't quite yet have some of the 2023 data that I was able to at least put together. The chief may have some additional data that she can share here in a moment. But what you'll notice is we did do a comparison just of calls and incidents to residential areas of Garner, so that includes apartments, townhomes, single-family, attached duplexes, all of those. And you can see the incident rate in the town for those residential areas versus the incident rate currently for the Mobile Home Park with the data that was provided from the Sheriff's Department. In 2020, it wasn't drastically different, but for 2021 and 2022, the incident rate is approaching about 50% higher, not quite, but it's approaching that. And then we talked with the Budget Office with Sarah, and she was able to estimate that the impact of contributions in tax dollars, should this be annexed, would bring in about $60,000 a year to the town's revenue stream at current tax rates. So again, as with the other case, next steps to consider tonight would be finishing and conducting, finishing the, finishing the public hearing and closing it, potentially considering adoption of the annexation ordinance. Again, this is currently outside of our ETJ, so if the desire was to proceed with this, the Planning Department recommends an effective date again of June 30th, as we did with the other one, and that if the ordinance was adopted, we would have then until August 20th to establish zoning, which again would either be our Mobile Home Park base district or the overlay, we just have to see how that would work. And again, Chief Smith is here tonight. She has, I think, a little bit of extra data that she could share with you, but otherwise we're here to answer any questions that you have, and that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Trezenberg. Is the applicant here to provide any information?
I don't know that they are. I reached out to them, and they did not have anything else additional that they really wished to share, other than the fact that they are looking to connect to the water system, which they can do either way. They just had to file the petition, and then it just determines what rate they will have to pay. If they're in the town, they pay one rate; if they're outside the town, they pay another.
So just to rephrase that another way for the layman of us here, if, if the council does not approve annexation, this, this site could conceivably purchase water from the Garner-Raleigh system?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And Chief Smith, would you like to add some, some information here for us?
Yes, sir, Mayor, members of council. This location is currently, this location currently receives its law enforcement service through Wake County Sheriff's Office. I reached out to them to request some additional data from them to try to determine the impact of service that this would have on us should we annex this property. Some of the data that we, that we originally received were from, was from 2018 to 2022 for five years, and it showed nearly 700 calls for service at this location and roughly 80 total incidents of crime at this location. So further, we, we received the additional 2023 data this afternoon, which was somewhat cause for concern for us. 2023 alone, they had 129 calls for service at this property, and roughly about a third of that were multiple officer calls, which were priority one through three calls for service, which means that we're being dispatched at least two, sometimes more officers per call. So with looking at this and conferring with my command staff, we do have calls for concern about taxing additional resources with this property. We estimate that it would require at least one, if not two, additional officers to provide service.
Pretty, pretty strong stuff, pretty strong information. Okay. Stand by, are there any questions from council for Chief Smith?
I have a question, Mr. Trezenberg, for me. How many mobile homes are out there now? It can be roughly, and...
I want to say it's 120-ish, maybe? I can probably find out real quick. This works like I want it to.
I do wish the applicant was here to ask him a question, is he going to keep this Mobile Home Park or transfer it over to a RV park later?
That, that I don't know. I mean, they do intend to keep it as some kind of mobile. They're not looking to redevelop this time, that I do know.
And the only thing they don't want is sewer or garbage pickup, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that's all I had.
But if it's sometime, they request trash collection. I mean, it's been, and it's annexed by the town, does, does the town, does not the town have to provide it at some time?
Typically, we provide residential garbage service to individual parcels, and this being a trailer park, Mobile Home Park, it's more like a business use. And so they would be serviced by a dumpster, even if they were annexed.
I tried it. Even on that picture, they got roll-out units, but anyway, that might be recycling units. The fact that the applicant's not here is pretty disrespectful. You know, and Chief Smith's information is not very, I don't think that's a wise move for the town to annex this property. If they want to get water and be charged out of town rates enough time, but I don't think this is a move we should even consider. His opinion, that other thought.
Okay, thank you. And Attorney Jones, was there, were there any individuals signed up to speak on this matter?
No, no one signed up for this particular public hearing.
By sign, okay. Any other observations or opinions as we discussed this before making a motion?
A quick question for Jeff, because it's a new situation for me, that water access. What, what's the, what's the delta on, on that, like the benefit for the annexing and getting that water versus not? That's the first part of the question. And the other one is a zoning question. I know it's going to be in sort of our new ETJ sort of area, but barring the ETJ expansion, what sort of the rezoning potential? Because I saw it zone our 40 watershed already, so they'd go to the county, but that, they'd probably kick it back to us anyway. So the water and then the zoning.
So for, on the water side, what I understand is it's like, it's a double rate. So if you're outside the town limits, you pay twice what you would if you were inside the town limits. So I think there, it's just, again, a call for them on what they're expending currently on trying to keep the well system going versus, and now that it's closer, running a 600-foot extension is much more reasonable for them to consider that. On the zoning side, we did kind of go around this in the ETJ draft, but again, that's one of those properties that if it were to redevelop, given the proximity, the county would boot it to us for consideration.
It seems to be the same group that we did the annexation for the Mobile Home Park on 70, the address was the same, the business name was different. They wanted to annex for water. Have they made any progress that you know of out there?
Not that I'm immediately aware of, but I could certainly inquire.
Nice if they were here to answer that question, but, thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Behringer? I've answered the question. Any other questions, Mr. Trezenberg?
I just got a comment, if I may, Mr. Mayor. I agree that with my colleague up here, if you're going to bring a project up here and you want to have something done of this magnitude, it'd be a good courtesy for the applicant to be here, and that speaks volumes. And because nobody we can ask question to, and the search of Chief Smith, what happened with Wake Sheriff's Department, this, I would not support bringing annexed this.
I believe with the last applicant, within the last year for the property on Highway 70, they also didn't show up at the public hearing, and we continued, and then they did show up. But if it's the same company and they didn't come this time, I'm sorry. I just don't think this is the, the best move for the town.
I would say also, just to dovetail off what Mr. Matthews said, in reference to the concerns of our police department and the straining of resources, this is one of those situations where the applicant should be present to defend what's going on with this particular annexation.
Okay. Well, I guess this is the point at which we've allowed everyone to have a, have a say. We've had comments and questions, and I guess at this point, we, we could close the public hearing and ask if there's a motion on the floor.
Mayor, move, we deny ordinance 2024-5251.
Motion made by Mr. Singleton, seconded by Mr. Matthews, all in favor of denying the request for annexation, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed by no, none, hearing none, it passes unanimously that we will not recommend the annexation on this particular project. Okay. Thank you very much, council. And let's see if we can find where we are on the agenda here. Now we come back to item number four, which is a tier-two conditional rezoning request for the 1306 Creech Road property. And amazingly, Mr. Trezenberg is here to tell us about it.
Yes, I am. Yes, so this is a tier-two request, so we do have a master plan associated with this one. And again, this is going through our initial review against the Garner Forward Comprehensive Plan, and so hopefully this will appear a little more streamlined than it has before, and we'll see how this goes. But yes, this is CZMP 2213 for 1306 Creech Road. The applicant and owner in this situation is an entity called CR 1306 and Zero LLC. It is a tier-two request, it's approximately just a little over 42 acres, currently zoned both rural, currently zoned rural agricultural, potentially going to multifamily B and commercial mixed use, both conditional. They are currently proposing 312 multifamily units and 5,000 square feet of commercial space, and the zoning conditions not only restrict the range of uses, but also add some commitments above and beyond what the UDO would require. So again, to set the current context, it is zoned rural agricultural, as it sounds. It usually just allows for very low-density residential and agricultural type uses. It's typically found in areas outside the town's corporate limits where public water and sewer is not readily available. However, part of that is true, part of that is not. The current uses on the site, there is one single-family detached home, and the rest is pretty much forestry, both permitted uses. You have various types of residential around the site, including more RA, but you do have some R2 and R4, and there is a little bit of multifamily right along Creech Road here with some in-line apartments. As I noted, water and sewer in this case actually are readily available, so that is one thing that is an indicator that things might be looking to change and for folks to be looking to the comprehensive plan for where the town would like to see that property go. It does currently only front on Creech Road, but it does have frontage on Jewel Street, which is eventually planned to extend eastward to Wilmington Road. And then there are three paper streets that stub into the property at various points. This is, much of the land along Creech Road was subdivided years and years ago in a preliminary grid-type pattern, so about every thousand feet or so, you have at least paper, if not some gravel in some cases for those roads. Much like the project on New Rand Road, this is not in an activity center, but is situated along a street that connects two activity centers. So we have a future activity center node up here where eventually Tryon Road will cut through from east to west and intersect with Creech Road, and then the neighborhood activity center at downtown. Creech Road, again, like New Rand Road, is a collector. It's envisioned to eventually be a three-lane or two-lane facility with a center turn lane. Traffic on Creech is still quite low relatively, it's about 5,500 based on the latest DOT data that we have, and it has been on a very slow but an upward trajectory since 2015. And I think those numbers back then were maybe somewhere in the 4,000s. So Creech Road does have some capacity to accommodate growth, but again, like New Rand, it lacks separate infrastructure for pedestrians and cyclists. In terms of their proposal, for the multifamily B portion, they have narrowed the uses down from 18 to two. This district would suggest that structures are typically a little more urban in character, and in comparison to how it would be situated with the MFA district, the MFA district is a little more suburban in character. The multifamily developments are generally clustered around active areas and allow people to live closer to places where they work and play. Certainly, other than downtown and the parks in that vicinity, that's really all that is there today, but as we see these activity centers at either end start to evolve over time, this could be one of those locations that feeds into that. The commercial mixed use, they've narrowed it down to three out of 59, and focused on complementary non-residential uses, since the MFB does not permit anything that's really non-residential. So this was something that happened during the review of the process, of the, of the project with staff. At one time, the project did not include these parcels that front on Creech and Jewel. The property owner that owns these parcel, his house is located right there, and he entertained some discussions with the developer to include his parcels and create an opportunity potentially for that non-residential component to be added to the project, giving it some, you know, substantial frontage on a corner there in the future that would be an intersection of Jewel and Creech. We encourage them to pursue that to the degree that the market would support it. In terms of their other conditions, they have provided conditions relating, related to both amenities and aesthetics. I will note that the number of aesthetic conditions you'll see has, will, will be greatly reduced from what you used to see. Now that we're in the new UDO, a lot of those architectural conditions are actually written into the UDO, and they would apply to apartments. So you won't see as many of those going forward, so it'll be a list that's a little more manageable. But in terms of amenities, they have provided for clubhouse, swimming pool, cabana, sundeck, dog parks, and waste stations, walking trails, and several other things. They are proposing a valet garbage and recycling service with specified hours of operation. And then the one architectural that they did include was that the buildings would have 12-inch minimum roof overhangs. That's something that the Planning Commission quite often recommends, so they were proactive in doing that. And to the left here, you see just kind of an inset. Creech Road is off here to the left. This would be the kind of the main drag coming down through, and the primary collection of amenities here at the terminus of that drive. Here is the overall site plan, so again, here was that entrance road and the collection of amenities here kind of at the center of the site. There are some open spaces elsewhere. They did include more of a entry plaza area associated with the non-residential component. And one of the things that I imagine the applicant will talk a little bit about is the topography of the site. This does slope down considerably towards the creek here in the back, and so it's estimated that these, you know, roof lines will not be any taller than what exists up on Creech Road today. So it's not like these buildings would tower over everything, they would actually be very similar in terms of their height and view from Creech Road. One other thing that I'll point out is this is positioned along one of our public greenway corridors, and they would be building and contributing to about a third of a mile or so of public greenway through the site that their private trails would connect into. So again, it is a little over 40 acres for the multifamily portion, a little over an acre for the commercial component. And again, just to note, the UDO will require that 25% of the open space requirement be active, and that minimum open space will be 4.2 acres. They do have a wealth of conservation areas to draw from, but they will have to have a combination of both conservation and recreation spaces. There are wetlands in the back, there's floodplains, all that will feed into that. And again, their recreation components are listed there as well. And then we just want to make some brief notes about the rest of the things that would be considered in the site plan later on. But in terms of stormwater and utility, we would note that this is not in the watershed protection area, this does not flow to Lake Benson, but it will still be subject to water quality and quantity requirements, so all the usuals in the UDO. They would be proposing to treat their stormwater with two surface components, and the commercial area would be treated with some underground facilities. And then there is that 12-inch line here on Creech Road, there also is a line that cuts cross-country through some paper right-of-way and some paper reservations for Jewel Street that actually runs over to Wilmington Road. The existing 18-inch sewer outfall here along Little Arm Branch that the prop, that it would connect to as well. And of course, Raleigh would require them to extend services to and through the property and upstream, so it would bring sewer up into this basin area between Creech and Wilmington a considerable distance. In terms of transportation, I do want to make one clarification that the applicant brought to my attention. The DOT drawings are not always real clear to us in the Planning Department how they always work, but there, this project is estimated to generate about between 1,500 and 1,600 new one-way trips. You see the AM and PM peak hour projections, and in terms of what came back from congestion management, this is what I wanted to clarify for you. There are dedicated lifts on Creech Road that DOT will be requiring, so 50 feet of, of storage plus taper at both the main site access and at Jewel Street. In terms of northbound, they would be shared rights, they would not be dedicated rights. So just would make that note for that. But the turn lanes do help to preserve some of that carrying capacity on Creech Road. Again, a two-lane with left, dedicated lifts should allow for up to about 18,000 trips per day at buildout. No changes were recommended at East Garner and Creech or at Sanderford and Creech due to the fact that I think a lot of those improvement- to the fact that I think a lot of those improvements have already been made, and this project alone did not trip any improvements at those locations. On the environmental and cultural resource side, we didn't see any cultural resources identified on the property, but you do see, again, here, whoop, the significant floodplains, floodway, and conservation buffer areas. So it does provide plenty of opportunity for, of course, tree canopy preservation by default, opportunities for trails and for the public greenway. So there were one hundred and thirty-five properties and occupants within the notification radius area. Again, due to the change in scope of the project, after talking with staff, we did kind of reset the process for the neighborhood meeting, so that's why you do see three. But you see those there, and at each one, there are about four or five attendees. And again, the full information is attached behind your staff reports. And in turning to the framework consistency, we identified sixteen criteria. Eleven of those came back. We felt strongly consistent in just a smattering of others across the other scores. We did note two that we rated as strongly inconsistent. Again, we try to give it either a thumbs up or a thumbs down and nothing in between. Technically, the CMX zoning district is not one that the plan endorses for neighborhood areas. However, they did reduce it down to just three uses. Those uses are very neighborhood-supportive. So we do feel that even though we gave it a thumbs down because it's technically not in the chart, they did condition it down more appropriately to what we would normally expect perhaps in a neighborhood mixed-use district, but for whatever reason, there's one of the uses that didn't fall within that category. The other negative was is we didn't find a playground open space feature that is recommended by the plan. Every neighborhood project should have a playground. They have a lot of recreational and passive and active amenities, but a playground was not one of them at this time. In terms of land use and community character consistency, staff, again, identified, we identified twenty-six criteria that could be applicable or meaningful for them to address. We did find that there is a slight lean towards consistency at this time, but it's not really strong, as strong as we would like to see it. However, staff does feel that with some minor changes and additional details, they could swing the pendulum more strongly in favor of consistency. And those are broadly grouped into three areas. One, there are some architectural themes that they could point to potentially in some of their written conditions that could sway some of those criteria and recommendations of the plan. But perhaps more so was those criteria and recommendations that are related to enhancing their street frontages and integrating more with the public realm. And in this case, the public realm that we have at this site is really limited to the streets that it fronts on as well as the public greenway that would be built. We don't have, we don't have any other town land in the area that they could really address. So it really is all about making some enhancements at the streets and integrating their private amenities a little more strongly with the public greenway as well as the streets. So again, we don't feel it would take a lot, but it would take some, a little more detail and attention to detail to start to address those criteria. So again, overall, as I stated, with some continued fine-tuning in response to these tools and additional public input and input from you all as council, we do feel that we will be like, that we will likely be able to support an overall finding of consistency by the time this would come back to you. And again, we do have that full kind of line item detail for you in your report. So again, next steps would be to consider finishing and closing the public hearing. The applicant is here tonight to make a presentation to you as well. And eventually then, upon closing the public hearing, then Planning Commission would take this up, go through their process of finding plan consistency and making their recommendation to approve or deny. And then as with the other case, this comes back to you for a final vote on reasonableness and a final decision to approve or deny.
Thank you very much, Mr. Treisenberg. While you're up and before we hear from the applicant, does council have any questions for Mr. Treisenberg? Okay, well, let's hear from the applicant. Thank you. If you would please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mayor Gupta, Mayor, members of council. My name is Randy Herman. I'm an attorney with law firm of BA Fulk, based in Cary, five-thousand Center Greenway. I'm here representing the applicant. Also here with me are the, the primary engineer and traffic engineer for the project that are available to answer any technical questions that may be beyond my understanding. So to begin with, the property is owned by a single-purpose LLC, but the, the actual developer is OCS Development Group. They're a real estate owner and developer with over three-hundred million dollars in real estate completed and in development. They have thirty-plus years of experience in construction and development, active in several different markets across the country, including North Carolina, and their most recent North Carolina project was in Morrisville, a project called The Stitch, which is what you see on the right side of the slides there. So again, the, the, we use the address thirteen-oh-six Creech Road. That's only a small part of it, but there isn't really an address for the overall project, so we use that to refer to the project. It's overall forty-two acres, currently zoned rural agriculture. And the proposed zoning is a combination, as Jeff said, of multifamily B and commercial mixed use. We'll talk about some of the specific aspects of that. This rendering shows our conception of what the, specifically the clubhouse for the project will look like, which, as you'll see on the plan, is kind of the central building, both centrally located and the, kind of, the central purpose of the, of the project. Many of the main amenities are located immediately around it. So again, the subject properties are, these ones outlined in, in yellow and red. The one outlined in red is the thirteen-oh-six Creech Road address. So it's that property on Creech Road, the larger, much larger property behind it, and then the smaller properties located at the corner of Jewel Street and Creech. Properties currently zoned RA, rural agriculture. On the future land use map, it is shown as medium-density residential. If the property were to be developed under the current zoning, it would be developable for about eighteen lots, would require a significant amount of, of new road, and total overall estimated value as developed would be about four-and-a-half million. We are proposing, again, three-hundred-and-twelve apartments and townhomes, five-thousand square feet of medical office. So we estimate an approximate eighty-million dollars in total value if the property is developed that way. And no new public roads would need to be dedicated. It would be private roads internal to the project. So these are a couple of the comprehensive plan policies that we feel like apply to the project. This is all from the brand-new comp plan. So the, having a different, a variety of different home types in the project, including a connected network of open space, organized around a public square or a common green, preserving the town's infrastructure and the town's network of green space. And we feel like we are meeting all of these goals. We'll talk through the plan in a minute. So one thing I want to point out on this development plan, and Jeff referred to it, but I think it is important because it's central to the, the design of the entire project, is that what is currently an unnamed road running down the center of the project. So the, the design is, that is the, you know, that is the, kind of, the front door to the project. It runs straight down uninterrupted to the location of the clubhouse. The clubhouse, the pool, many of the central amenities are located immediately around that clubhouse, and so that'll be a clear shot in from the road, and that's kind of your, your main entrance to the project. Up at the corner of Creech and Jewel is where the commercial use would be located, so that's a five-thousand-square-foot building. We'll talk about the, the specific uses that would be allowed in that in a minute. We, we have it labeled as medical office, but it would also, under the proposed zoning, allow for other professional office and general office. It would be, it would be an office building with various different types. You can see that, that is designed with a separate entrance off of Jewel. So even though the, the internal roads do connect to the residential portion of the property, it also allows for patients or clients coming to that building to be able to come in and out without disrupting the residential portion of the property. Uh-oh, there it is. Sorry, this microphone's going kind of in and out. So the, the, kind of, pinkish-colored buildings are high-rise multifamily buildings, the yellow buildings down at the bottom, kind of, fronting on the stormwater, the large stormwater pond. Those are townhome-style buildings. You'll see in a minute how significantly sloped the property is, but all of those bold black lines on the project are retaining walls. So below where the townhomes are located, it'd be below where the clubhouse is located. There'd be a significant drop-off to the stormwater ponds, and so there'd be retaining walls in those areas. So that's what those bold black lines are. So these cross-sections are intended to give a sense, again, of the, the slope of the overall property. So from the far-left side, which is where Creech Road is located, you can see the location of some of those existing houses along Creech Road. That's the small house, the first building. And you can see there's both a significant horizontal distance from where those are located to where the first buildings would be located in the project, and also a significant vertical distance down. So as Jeff said, looking at the project from Creech Road, even though some of the buildings are intended to be three or four stories, from Creech Road, they would look no higher, look no taller than the single-story houses that are currently located along Creech. It would look like the same height, assuming you could even see them because there are significant trees between the road and those buildings. But even if you couldn't see them, they wouldn't look any taller than a single-story house. So even though they will be fairly tall buildings, they won't loom over the existing houses. That was a deliberate aspect of the design to try and minimize the impact on the people who already live out there. As for the zoning conditions, so within the multifamily portion of the property, the uses would be conditioned only to townhome-style and apartment multifamily. Those would be the, the two uses that would be allowed. In the commercial mixed-use portion of the property, again, it would be conditioned so the only uses permitted would be medical office, professional office, and other office. So although the, the district would otherwise allow for a variety of different uses, these are the ones that we considered would be appropriate on this project, and so it's conditioned down to only allow those uses. You can also see for the various amenities, there are minimum square footage numbers for each of those amenities, and you can look through those. This is the utility plan. So blue is for water, green is for sewer. We are required to provide a sewer tie-off to all of the lots that are upstream from ours. That doesn't necessarily mean that they would be required to connect to sewer, but that capacity would be available to them if they wanted to do that. And both water and sewer are available to the project. And then this is a final rendering showing the overall project, shown from a location essentially above Creech Road, showing the design, the proposed design of the various buildings. So the, the apartment buildings, the lower townhome buildings, and then, kind of hard to see, but just at the bottom of that rendering, that's where the medical office building would be located. Happy to answer any questions from members of council. Again, if it's over my head, we have the engineer here to answer any kind of technical questions, and we, we certainly ask for your support for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman, and I'll ask council if they have any questions for Mr. Coleman.
Yes, I do. In reference to the cross-sections that you provided to us to view, and we know that the contours can vary as you go along the terrain. How, is this the worst case when it comes to elevating, elevations, or which one is the, sort of, best case showing just where, how it will not loom over the existing homes?
Yeah, so it, because the whole project slopes down from the road to the stream, it is relatively uniform. These are actual engineered cross-sections that are chosen from specific locations, but it, it would be fairly similar to, along the entire project.
Fairly similar.
Excuse me, please. We'll, we'll have testimony and questions in just a moment. This is for the council members to ask questions of the applicant.
I don't really have any elevation, elevations to know what it would, these would look like. There's a lot of maps, but no elevation, so that's kind of one of, a concern. The other is the height of the apartment buildings is to be what?
So the, because of the slope, they generally would be split, so most of them are three, four splits, so that the part that is kind of up the hill will be three stories, the part that's down the hill will be four stories.
They'd all have elevators?
Yes.
Okay. And just a, a general, now, I'll have several questions, but I'll pass on. It's a very flat design. If you look at the layout, it's, if you go to the, can you go to the, an overhead view? There's almost just a straight line of apartments and lacks character and diversity and walkability. You got rows and rows and rows of parking, rows and rows and rows of apartments. It's kind of just like plucked in there. Pretty boring.
So we looked at a lot of different layouts for this. One element that, that contributes to that is, you know, the, the whole site is forty-two acres, but almost half of that is stream wetlands, right? So what you actually end up with as a buildable area is kind of long and thin just because of that. We also, you know, trying to keep the buildings as far away as possible from the existing homes along Creech Road to minimize the impact meant that we couldn't put a whole lot of buildings up there. So some aspects of the design are kind of dictated by the, the site.
Another recommendation, just go taller, go to five stories. Other question, and I dovetail with some other questions, probably is there's another project to the north of this project. What has been the coordination with that project? I mean, I think it was supposed to originally be on here tonight, but for two adjacent properties, what's sort of been the conversation about either connecting them? Looks like there's some stream issues, but what, what's been that dialogue?
Because of, again, because of kind of the, the wetland areas, it kind of separates the project. So even though they are adjacent...
So even though they are adjacent, the location where we would have buildings and the locations where they would have buildings are not actually that close to each other. So we certainly have been in contact with them, but we have not seen any kind of an obvious avenue for connecting them.
Thank you. That's all for now. Barringer?
Yes, I believe I read in materials that at the present time Jewel Street is a gravel road.
That's right.
At what point will that be asphalt?
As part of the project, we would be required to pave up to, you know, the frontage that we have on the project, up to our, that lower entrance. I want to say southern, but actually the north is to the right, so the easternmost entrance. So it would be paved up to that entrance. The remainder of Jewel Street beyond that, we're not proposing to pave and I don't know that the city has any immediate plans to do anything with it. That's a discussion that we have had with the city.
I'm concerned about the access to Creech Road because you say that Jewel Street will be in access and then the main entry from Creech Road, but that's essentially two access points from Creech Road. Jewel Street's not that far off. And I believe I read in some of the materials that at the present time Creech Road is a rural country road. There's a lot more traffic on that road than meets the eye initially and with the development that we have coming along or applications that we have coming, that's something we need to take into consideration. We're going to need more than turn lanes to handle all that traffic. So I'm real.
Mr. Singleton, questions?
Well, I've got lots of questions. You've probably come around to me several times. Yeah, I've got an email here from Mr. Herman where he says, in regards to Creech Road, "Many people were concerned about the increased traffic on Creech Road that would result from this project, even though it really is a pretty rural country road." That impression is that traffic is already too high. I'll be glad to take you about an hour Easter here and show you some really rural country roads. This is not a rural country road. There's a school on it, people use it as a cut-through. I drove from, when I was at the hospital today to go there as a back way to go on Creech Road, I drove one way back tonight. Your traffic counts here I have a lot of concern about. Says 1,566 trips one-way on the average workday. Okay, there's 550 spaces, I might include the 25 or 27 for the commercial, so office, excuse me. So 550. Well, 1,566 trips divided by 550 is 2.84 trips. So we're going to say people are going to take less than three trips a day per vehicle, per house, per unit there. Now, here's the contrast. We've got another project up Garner Road. Mr. Rock was here, I think he's left. We've been discussing. He's back there now, he's moved, I couldn't see him. Now, they got a unit, a project that's now down to 950 units, but this can put 6,000 units out on roughly at Garner Road and seven, eight hundred on Creech. So we're talking over 6,000 units. Well, that's 950 and this is 312. If you take 312 three times, we're at 936. So they're almost the same number. So if you took their number between 6,000 and 7,000 and divided it by a third, that's over 2,000 trips and you're saying 1,566. Somebody's numbers aren't right. And we've asked them and they have changed their numbers more than once because we have grilled them on it and they've given us more and more information and the number keeps going up. And the concern is, by building behind existing homes, you're putting additional traffic on Creech Road and making minimal improvements. As Mr. Treusenberg said, I think if you did the three lane, had the turn lane right and left, you would add 18,000 trips or whatever, I think is what he said. But we're not having that here. There's just a little narrow strip and a little narrow strip here, just like with some other proposals that are on Creech Road. So the impact is going to be on Creech Road and all the people who drive it and the road improvements are going to be minimal. And that's a huge problem. Mr. Dellinger noted the straight line. This is what I refer to here in Garner is ramming cram. I should ram and cram as much stuff on here as we can. My traffic concerns are serious because I don't jibe with these numbers, I know you're traffic guys here, but how can one development up the street give me these numbers and yours are much lower? I don't buy that. You're saying that people aren't going to take more than 2.84 trips. That means they're going to go somewhere, come back and go somewhere and they can't come back. I mean, that's what three trips is, leave, come back and leave. I'm just saying that's what the average is. I know I'm making funny, but I'm being serious. Those numbers, I mean, you can look at all kinds of numbers on Google and all that and it's more than 2.84 trips in my household. Some single-family homes generate 10 trips, this isn't single-family homes, I understand.
So I'm going to ask the traffic engineer to answer that specifically. There are specific ways that they are required to count those trips.
I understand that.
Name is Jeff Hoconald, 5410 Trinity Road, Raleigh, North Carolina, 27607. We did the traffic.
What was your name again, sir?
Jeff Hoconald.
Thank you.
Yeah. We did the traffic setting for this project, specifically the trip generation you had questions about. That's dictated by the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. That's a, that's a manual that they look at numerous developments throughout the country and comes up with a rate and/or equation depending on the land use type. Those numbers were pulled directly from that manual. What we looked at, I don't know what the other development looked at. We use single-family attached for the 24 townhome type that are kind of in the back along the pond and we use multifamily mid-rise, about 288 dwelling units for that. As you move, the trip generation numbers do go down as you have the higher of the buildings. That's just the way, that's the way the numbers come out. But, I mean, I stand by my numbers, I don't know what the, I don't know what the other development did that made theirs change, but yeah, I mean, these are numbers that we've, we're familiar with using that manual, used it for years and they seem consistent with what we've seen for the past developments, so.
And I understand you use the manual, but if the manual was correct, all these roads could handle this traffic, we wouldn't have all these traffic issues around the triangle. I mean, I hate not being ugly, I'm just saying, the Creech Road may be a pretty rural country road, but it's a cut-through and in the afternoon when people are trying to avoid the Jones-Sausage Road intersection, at the intersection with Garner Road, sometimes there'll be 15 to 20 cars that may have turned left. Sometimes there'll be a dozen cars where Creech intersects, where Creech continues and then it splits off from Sanford, which is the cut-through where I did today. Sometimes there'll be a dozen cars there in the afternoon. That's peak time. I understand this, right now that's not happening. But we have to look at peak time because also in the morning you have, you have an elementary school located on that, on that road. And as you go into Raleigh on Sanford, where newer development is, they have the three lanes. It's up there. Creech never has three lanes anywhere along it. So my concern again is the trip generation, but really is the lack of improvements on Creech Road to help make some of the trip generation not as bad. I know you're going to make improvements at the entrances and along the frontage here by the office complex, but the trip generation and the minimal improvements, I mean, we're not getting road improvements that we need to, you know, I think it was maybe the whole length of the property, but that's not the way the process works. So that's my concern. I appreciate you explaining how you got your numbers and defined them, but I question, I don't, I'm sorry. I see there's too many crowded roads in the triangle for all the engineering and all that, so that's to be correct, it just doesn't add up.
Well, like I said, we looked at our numbers, we looked at the, we did a traffic count, we grew the traffic by 3%. We looked at area developments that were provided to us by the town, NCDOT, ran the analyses based on using the IT trip generation for generated trips and the two intersections, the two signalized intersections at the end of Creech Road, both operated at a, or projected operated at a level service C or better during both peak hours. So, I mean, again, I don't doubt that on occasion you could see queuing. That's, I mean, that's not unheard of, but the analysis that we conducted showed that it operated acceptably, which didn't require any mitigation at those locations. Now, we do, like I said, we will, we did recommend the turn lanes at the driveways, which will pull those slowing and stopping vehicles out of that through-vehicle stream and allow them a place to queue safely in the, you know, before they're able to turn in. So it should, it should function properly.
Right. Thank you for your time.
Question for you. Let me run down this way again, see if Mr. Matthews has a question.
Just one question, Ms. Mayor, I think everybody's, it is a tough road out there and it is what it is, you know, and, but what's happening in our greater community, if you guys are aware of it, but we have road issues all over with development and so many developers now are coming together looking at private, public ways of making these roads better because if we're generating the traffic, maybe we can be, help eliminate some of it or make it flow smoother. So all I'm just saying is, Mr. Treusenberg and the staff understand all the details about it, they could share more with you, but if you've got a neighbor up the road fixing to deal with the same issues, that if you guys could get together and look at something and get with our planning department and give you some ideas what some of the other developers are doing, so, yeah, we'll bring it. Everybody's moving to Garner, I grant that, but we've still got to move that traffic. So if it's a way we can work together to move that traffic, that benefits everybody. You know, we can sit here and swap back and forth all night and nobody walk out selling anything, but if we can link up and do with your project and one up the street there, like we were doing some other places, therein might remedy the issue. So I'm just offering that up to you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. If there was another question or comment?
Yes, in reference to the traffic, the traffic analysis and thank you for your explanation and, is it safe to assume that the process that you use in developing your traffic analysis is one that's used throughout the, throughout the county, throughout the state, throughout the country? So it's a standard operating?
Standard NCDOT policies, procedures, yeah. We scoped the, scoped the project with the town and NCDOT, followed their standards and guidelines. We submitted the study to the town and NCDOT, reviewed by both and comments were provided.
Well, this project in particular, was a, was a TIE required?
It was.
Okay. And, and, and went through NCDOT review, what type of, well, the improvements that are being placed on Creech Road are those that are necessary to fulfill the requirements of the TIE?
We recommended those improvements be constructed, NCDOT agreed with our recommendation.
Just a little half.
Mr. Dellinger?
Just to follow up with what Mr. Singleton said about the numbers and the reality, the numbers don't jibe with what ends up on the ground in terms of functioning traffic. If there are parts of Garner that every TIA worked, like magic around New Bethel Church Road and White Oak Road, all the TIA's came back, this is going to be great, this is going to be, and it turns out not to be great. And with 24, 2,000 to 2,400 units in our pipeline along Creech Road right now, there's no way those numbers work. And I did some research, which I'm apt to do, on these engineering numbers and they magically change over time and they've gotten smaller and smaller. And I don't know, is it a function of, maybe some of these places are oversampled closer to transit, where somebody can walk to a bus and not have to in these higher-density, you know, apartment areas, right? But the numbers seem to change over time and they don't seem to work in reality. And I've never seen a TIA come back and say, this project is not feasible. And there are parts of the town where if you just looked at the traffic, experienced the traffic, you'd say, man, we should really shouldn't build anymore down there.
Can't speak to the numbers changing. I said that's the manual that's published every year. I do know the DOT reviews those numbers and approves what's, what's, what we're to use. So they've looked at them, they've done the research and require us to use certain, for a four-story building, say we use a different land use code and for, say, a single-family house. So we just follow what the DOT's guidance is, but I can't speak to why they'd change.
That's what I'm saying, the manual, I looked at their, their processes to basically do almost like a scientific analysis of different ones and then average it out. And I question the numbers because the reality doesn't bear out the drivability and again, I don't know if it's an oversampling where people don't have to drive because there's a bus stop, right? I don't know. Or you're just saying, oh, that's an apartment and we'll just average all those together. There's something not right in the numbers and it'd be helpful if DOT and transportation experts would come and say, we need to reevaluate this because as, as members of, as elected officials and we've seen these projects come up and come out of the ground, the impacts far exceed what was sort of predicted as this sort of, this is going to turn out fine. So.
Thank you, Mr. Dellinger. Ms. Barringer?
Just a comment related to Mr. Matthews' suggestion. We have several projects along Creech Road that are in the pipeline. If we approve each one of them independent of the others, we're going to have a mess out there as far as the traffic goes and the ability of Creech Road to handle it. You know, standing alone, yeah, the TIA's work, but standing together with eight or 10 projects, they don't work. We need to find a way to work together so that everybody is served equally instead of this one here, this one here, and this one here, because it's not going to work. Putting all those dwellings out there and a two-lane road is just not going to work.
That's a very astute observation. I'd just like to second the concerns I've heard from several councilmen up here about partnering with other entities and also taking a look at the larger picture. While we look at just this one thing, we see this much traffic, but as I've heard, mentioned several times here, just go up another 200 feet and look out and you see not only from Creech Road Elementary to approximately a little past your project, a little north of your project, there's over 1,000 dwelling units in our pipeline. Further north than that, another 2,000. Back toward town where the proposed road coming out, the connector road from Garner Road through the park at Garner Station, another thousand. Over 4,000 units that we can see right, right here in your neighborhood. That's my observation, second to that. And my question is, given that, and also looking at the map and seeing, at least on paper, Jewel Road runs down to where Wilmington Road from the other side comes in, has any thought been given in trying to make that connector so that people can get from Creech Road to Jones-Sausage Road without going back into Raleigh or without going to Garner Road and coming down that? Could you tell us a little bit about your thought process on that?
Yeah, I was looking to see if I had a map that was scaled out far enough that you can really see it and I don't particularly, but yeah, that's exactly right. So the Jewel Street has, although it is kind of gravel and dirt and peters out in terms of what's actually built there, the right-of-way would go through to Wilmington or where Wilmington would be if you continued it up. And, you know, ideally, one of the ways that you would avoid traffic on Creech is you would have additional roads, you would have a grid. The problem is that the people who live back there on Wilmington don't want that to happen and the people in the neighborhood behind where Wilmington would go up don't want the road to be there. So, you know, in a vacuum, that seems like the solution, but also the people who live there don't want it. And so that puts us in a, in a difficult position in proposing that.
I understand. Thank you. And if there's no more questions for the applicants here.
I have a question for Ms. Blackman. She didn't think she was going to get by last, asking her questions.
I thought I was just going to get to sit here. Beth Blackman, Simmons Group, 5410 Trinity Road, Suite 102, Raleigh, North Carolina. You can ask. I did have one, I was going to comment on the linear design of the site. Do you want to go back to the? That is purely driven by the topography of this site. We have, we did play with other versions, we tried to be much more creative. It is pretty much impossible to grade at that point if we, so by lining the buildings up, you're able to have that three, four, four, five split in a row with the connector roads in between that don't have parking on them because we cannot park anything that is too steep. So that allows you to have a flatter parking area. Your building gives you the grade break, lets you make up some grade and then you have another flatter parking area. So, no, I totally agree, it is not very creative. We do not have a lot of area to work with and we fought off, I think it was like 280 up at Creech, all the way to, I saw it, 240 at the back, so.
Questions about the, yes, there's three, on this map, there's three designated open spaces by the clubhouse, the narrow piece and the piece the most northern. Do you have the square footage of those areas that are designated with the lines? How much, how big those are?
So we are showing larger than what we have committed to in the zoning conditions. The dog area is about 2,500 square feet and the lawn beside it is about 3,500 square feet. We do want to give ourselves some flexibility to make sure that we get a, you know, a nice flat usable area when we're all said and done. And then there's some other areas, the one off on the right side of the page, which would be the most northern one, but on the right side of the page, is about 4,000 square feet. And then the one up, the one on the area adjacent to the paper right-of-way going up towards Creech, you know, it's not all, does not need to be all perimeter buffer. Obviously, it has got trees on it right now, so it may be most appealing to leave it as tree, but it also so it may be most appealing to leave it as tree, but it also could be an open space area. And that's, as shown, about 6,000 square feet. But again, that would require some clearing and stuff, so I don't know how appealing using that area is.
And the concern mentioned by Mr. Trezenberg, we've got a site here, this can probably have families there with kids, and there's, even though you've got a clubhouse, the pool, the pool's only going to be open five or six months of the year, no playground, no place designated for kids. You know, if, if we, if you don't do the trees and the narrow open space, we got two narrow, small open spaces. You know, why don't you move the dog run to the edge, and why don't you put a playground near beside the open space?
So, the property owner is actually working with a marketing and apartment management company already, and they have worked through the amenities that they wanted to see, what they're using, what they're seeing in apartments nowadays. And so I will be honest that a playground did not come up as something at all. They're seeing much more, I guess, young professionals, not families with children. But it is certainly something that we can consider. But the clubhouse area, they've talked about, you know, having the, the exercise room, obviously. They've talked about having like a yoga area. Obviously, they have male kiosk and leasing and stuff like that. But a gathering area, and so, like I said, we've had lots of conversations. I'm sure it's something we can take back to them because we saw it in the staff report and, and discussed, Randy and I discussed it. But a playground did not come up previously.
Okay. Well, move the dog run somewhere else and make them more open space for young professionals and whatever. They want to lounge around in the lawn or whatever when it's quiet. I'm serious. You know, there, there will be some kids there. It may not be many, but there will be kids who want to do something to roll a ball out and play in a room bigger than, in an area bigger than this room.
The other thing that I would add when you're talking about amenities is, again, there's a public greenway that will be built along the stream. There'll be trails coming down from the project that will connect into that. So that is also a recreational amenity that we expect a lot of people will use.
Yes, sir. And nowadays, that's probably pretty standard operating procedure on most of these projects. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Blackman.
I have a question for Ms. Blackman. One question. Have you had any consultation with, actually, what are the unit sizes for, for the apartments? What's the breakdown of bedrooms?
So, excuse me. I do not have the breakdown of bedrooms, but you actually can slightly see them on there. They were quite significant. And like I said, there's been a lot of conversations. I'm not an architect, so I didn't retain most of that conversation, but there are one, two, and three bedroom units. The townhome units, I believe, are going to be the three bedroom units. And in the apartment buildings themselves were the one and two unit bedrooms. But they were talking about the amenities. They've looked at the layouts already. You know, they've talked about what each of them has in them, what would be included. So they've actually, you know, really started to put thought into what goes into these units.
Only one and two bedrooms in the apartments?
I do believe it was one and two in the apartments. Because the percentage-wise, the 24 townhome units, you know, is kind of about what you would have seen if they had spread it around.
We had an analysis done through the school of government last fall on our apartment build-out, and there are almost no three-bedroom apartments being built in Garner. And that's, doesn't make them available for families. You're really restricting who, who's going to be here. So that kind of goes into my next question. Have you had any conversations with the school system on impacts on schools?
We have not, as far as I'm aware.
And the last question, and then we can move on. Any, any discussion on workforce housing?
You're talking about in terms of specific dedicated units?
Yes.
No, although we do, we do expect that it's going to be one of the primary users of, of the site. You know, it's, it's located right up the road from the, from Amazon, and that...
But what are your price points?
I don't think we know that yet.
How do you know there's going to be workforce housing?
Because of the proximity to, to, to jobs, we expect that this is, would, would...
Because our workers make $15 an hour, you're going to charge at least 1,400 for your one bedroom, so that's not affordable for them. So you've answered my question. You've not given a lot of thought to the workforce housing question yet. Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Not at this time. Thank you. Thank you. And I want to remind everyone what, what our process here, not just for the meeting tonight, but the, at the end of this public hearing, the council will have the choice to pass this along to the planning commission for further review, and then it would come back again to council for a final decision. So this is not a final decision at all. The other option that council might have at the end of this public hearing, they could either leave it open if they need some more information on certain details to be reviewed at a, at a, at a future date, not too far off. So we're still gathering information, still getting ideas. Very important that we hear input as well from the neighbors. And, and if we move into that segment, Ms. Jones, could you tell me if some people are signed up to talk tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have several signed up.
Okay. Roughly how many?
It looks like four.
Okay, okay. And you, do they know, do you know who you are, who have signed up? The four that have signed up, if you would, just raise your hand, the four that have signed up. Okay. And we're going to let them go in proximity of who's closest to the mic first?
They, they did sign up in order, if you want me to call the names.
Sure, let's do that.
So the first one is David Watson.
Yes, David. Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
David Watson, 102 Arling.
Thank you.
Not a speaker. This is too much traffic. What I was going to say tonight, Gray has brought it up, Mr. Damien has brought it up, Ms. Dellinger, I mean, Ms. Kathy, she's brought it up. I don't have to say it. It's too much at one time. I'm asking you to say no now, or leave it open and bring these other projects. You got the big project on Garner Road, you all know it. It's been around two years. You got Dan Dixon. I think it's maybe stale right now. You got a lot going on on Creech Road. Looking at one project at a time. You say... Maybe on paper it does. Fifty-five years. I've been there. It's home. It's changing. I don't want to leave. It's a great place. But if we do all this, it's not a threat. I don't want to leave, but I may have to. I had to wait to get here tonight to get out on Arling Street, to get onto Creech. If y'all have not been to Creech Road when school is letting out, please do. If you have not been on Creech Road when there is a funeral, please do. I have complained many times about funeral home. I don't know how you can solve it, funeral traffic, parking on the road. It's too much. Creech Road, the elementary school backs up to the tennis courts. They're doing what they can. They're even running traffic through the park to help alleviate it. It's a problem. The house beside the school, I believe it's a food bank of some sort with, associated with the church. I've seen traffic go down the parking lot at Creech Road School, loop around, and get back on Creech to get into that one driveway for the food bank. I don't know if these traffic analysts see this, but please, stop it now or table it and get all these projects together. You all know where I'm coming from. You said it. The only other thing I'd say specifically about this project, if you have not been on Creech Road, go pull in them apartments right there and try to pull out on Creech. Look left. You can't see what's coming over the hill. Look right. You can't see what's coming around the curve. I know y'all do what you need to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You stayed under our imaginary three-minute limit.
Well, it says I went over by six.
The next speaker?
And I believe the second one is Sonia Blackman.
And if you would state your name and address, please.
My name is Sonia Blackman, and I live at 1204 Creech Road. I live beside the proposed road that's going to be the main drag. And my concern also is the traffic. My main concern is the road being put beside my house. It's basically going to be, I have a little car shelter, and the road is going to be like, I guess there's going to be a sidewalk, my car shelter, a sidewalk, and then a road. So that road is going to be built on top of me, basically, between me and my neighbor, the settlers that are here. It is going to greatly affect our lives. It's going to change our lives. We're going to lose all of our privacy, the noise. We're, if you're going to have people coming up the road turning in, the street, the headlights are going to be shining in my house at night, the brake lights. The speed limit on Creech Road is 45 in front of my house. People do about 60. There are going to be so many wrecks from people not paying attention, slamming on brakes. There's going to be a lot of wrecks right there if they put that road beside my house. The main thing also, like on the weekends, I don't know if you've driven Creech Road on the weekends, there's always a lot of racing on Creech Road, okay? I know it's 35 up by the school, but people use Creech Road, as like you said, as a cut-through. The traffic, the noise. My main concern is that road being put by my house. The amount of cars that are going to be going in and out on a daily basis right on top of me. The attorney has told me, though, that they are willing to work with me and put like a privacy fence up so that I will have some privacy beside the road and maybe at the back of the lot, depending on how much of a buffer they're going to put at the back of the lot. My other concern is, when they start logging this property, logging these trees out, the logging trucks on Creech Road, that's going to be a nightmare. And the noise from that, people fly up and down Creech Road, they don't pay attention. I know you're talking about that some work needs to be done to Creech Road. I don't want to lose part of my front yard to another lane of traffic, but that's not my decision, that's you guys' decision. And I totally understand that everything is up to you guys, but I am, I'm, I'm against this project, even though they are willing to work with me on some of the privacy issues that I've asked them. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Jones?
The next speaker is Ricky Pierce.
I'm Ricky Pierce. I live at 1810 Van Dore Springs Road. I'm the great-grandson of Jim Creech, the namesake of Creech Road. My family's been in that area since before the 1850s. I own property on Jewel Street, and I don't care what was said. I have not received anything about that. My first knowledge of this was last year about this time when I got a phone call. And what I want to speak to is the character of the developer. A gentleman called and asked would I be interested in selling two lots. Those lots my dad's on since 1965, they're basically worthless. I said, "Sure, I'll entertain an offer." Took about a week, two weeks maybe, before I got an offer. And on the day I got an offer, Mr. Thompson that lives up on Creech Road called me, merely begging me not to sell my two lots to the developer, that he, that he wanted to keep his quality of lifestyle, and he didn't want to see all these apartments back here, and asked me if I would take from him the amount of money that the developer had offered. I said, "Well, I'm a man of, I'm going to do what my dad would do if he were here," and he'd say no to the development. I said, "If you can match that, I'll take your money." I don't want a development either. But I can see now that Mr. Thompson's not a man of his word, because it looks like he's joined in with this. As to the character of the developer, I got a call from him after I told his lawyer or whatever that I was not interested in selling, a reason for it. He called and kind of chastised me a little bit for trying to hold this project back, asked me had I signed the papers with Mr. Thompson. I said, "No, I haven't signed the papers yet." He said, "Oh, well, we can still deal." Well, I'm a son of the South. I don't do business like that. I don't like people that expect me to do business like that. It speaks of character, and that's the character of who we want to allow to do this. Garner don't need characters like that. This thing needs to be held until the roads are improved, and until when the roads are improved and can handle all the extra, then maybe consider this, but not now. And we need to look strongly at the character of people that want to come down here, buy our property, build their projects, never thinking about the quality of lifestyle that the people that live along Creech Road. I've got family that still lives there. At one point, my family owned land from the creek all the way up to almost the school. I wouldn't sell because I don't want to do that to my family. I don't, I don't want nobody else to do that to my family. I don't want y'all to consider this. Think about the people that live there and the quality of their lifestyle and what you're getting ready to do by turning all this loose. Oh, it looks pretty on paper. Ten years from now, what's it going to look like? It's not going to be the same project. I've been in construction all my life, and I've seen apartment complexes that look pretty when they need, but 10 years later, everything always changes. Say no to this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. And we have another speaker?
Yes, Sandra Frye, or Sandra Fie.
Hi, folks. I'm really sorry for my earlier question. I don't know anything about these processes. I'm not educated in these matters. I'm learning all of this with you. I'm nervous as heck being up here, but not quite as nervous as my, my two neighbors, Archie and his wife here. And they have asked me to speak on their behalf, too, so please forgive me.
You're forgiven. You're fine.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, these, these folks keep talking about this main entry. This is just one of my many items. This main entry from their development out there is a paper street, which has been referred to, which is kind of like Monopoly money. It's just paper play. It's, it's not a street. It's not even a gravel drive. It's a little area between their houses. It's, it's been incorporated basically as part of their yard. So that is what would become a main drag, a main thoroughfare with sidewalks out of this place. And if they're going to add a third lane, where the heck are they going to add it? Are they going to take property right off the front of ours in addition to building right behind us, smack where we look out the windows? And, and I know they said it would only be the same height as our houses in the back, but they'd be a heck of a lot bigger, and we'd have all that additional traffic. You know, we're, we're not international or national developers or 300 million dollar companies or anything like that. We're just local residents. We love Garner. We're vested in this community. You know, we shop here, eat here, dine here, work here, party here. And we're the ones that've been paying taxes all these years, and we just want a good quality of life. Now, we know that some time that is going to be developed, and I don't think any of us would object to a single-family development, or maybe small, small multifamily up to R4. You know, I think that would be much more manageable. But something like this doesn't fit in that neighborhood. It has its pinchers right around those of us. Those, that block at the top is houses, folks. That's where these folks have lived for years, right in the pinchers of that community that they want to build there. And there really aren't reasonable exits and entrances into that area unless a whole lot is done along Creech Road. So we would just ask that you consider, you know, the big picture, which you obviously are, but also the small picture for those of us that live here and love the community, and we wanted to stay that way.
What's your address, ma'am? What's your address? Your address?
1200 Creech.
1200. Okay, thank you.
Okay. And that concludes the speakers who have signed up. Is that correct? Ms. Jones?
Yes, that's correct.
If I could make the indulgence of the council, I didn't know how these things worked, or I would have signed up.
Well, please, please step to the microphone and state your name and address, and we'll be glad to hear from you as well.
My name is Louise Cook, and I live right there, in that block right there. I live in the old Homer Creech property at 1103 Creech Road. Now, a lot of the things I was going to say have been addressed, but some of them have not, and I think it's in the interest of efficiency to get it out in the open as early as we can. So one of the things I wanted to talk about is how, I don't know if any of y'all live on Creech Road, but a lot of people walk to the bus stop up and down Creech Road. This isn't a neighborhood where everybody hops in their car and goes. We have people that walk all the way up almost to Rock Quarry to catch the bus. We have people that walk all the way up almost to Rock Quarry to catch the bus. We also have people that ride their bicycles up and down Creech Road. I don't know if that's all they've got, but that's all they use. I have to watch going out in the mornings and especially coming back at night because there are people that use that road by foot and by bicycle and sometimes even by scooter. And there's one fella that uses his electric wheelchair. So we really have to watch out for our neighbors on this road and we think of everybody as our neighbors on this road. This isn't a bunch of faceless strangers, these are our folks. And what some of these other people have said about people speeding through there, they're absolutely right. There are people that come through any time of the day or night and they're using it like a speedway. We need to protect the safety of our children, the safety of our neighbors, and the safety of this road. And you talk about getting a third lane in there, I don't know who else said it, but they're absolutely right. Where are we going to put a third lane? We've got deep ditches on both sides. I can barely turn into my driveway right there without having to kind of ink around this way and kind of aim this way, then aim this way, then aim this way, and I can barely get in there. That's the way they built roads back then. You know, that's the way they built driveways, narrow to save space. It's going to be major construction work to widen that road. You're not talking about just painting on some paint, you're talking about taking easements from people, you're talking about putting in new pipes, you're talking about digging more ditches. This is not going to be an easy thing to widen that road. Now, I sometimes substitute teach up at Creech Elementary. They are not kidding about the nightmare it is when it's time for school to go in or let out. There are cars backed up everywhere and when you come up the other way and you get almost a rock quarry and that little round school building up there at that end, my gosh, it's horrible there too. This road is not built for a three-way, but that's what people are already using it for. And my gosh, since they put in Tryon Point, if they're by the Memorial Gardens where Creech and Sanford kind of get all mixed up, there are people backed up, I don't know how they ever get out. I don't know how they ever get out from where that road bends at a 90 and Creech and Sanford come together because they're backed up forever waiting to get out on the road. There needs to be a light there. But ever since they put in that Tryon Point area, traffic is at least twice as dense because I'm counting cars. I'm sitting there in my driveway waiting to get out and I'm counting cars. And it used to take me three cars from this way or three cars from that way. Now, I'm waiting about a dozen cars each way to get out of my driveway. And that's just with Tryon Point. What's it going to be when you add this many more units? I'm not saying growth is bad. I know there's a horrible crying need for housing units. Just don't know if we need to do it blindly. I don't know if we need to rush into it without planning everything out ahead of time. You add this many more units, what is it, 312 units? We're going to need more first responders, we're going to need more policemen, we're going to need more firemen, we're going to need more ambulance drivers. We're going to need more schools, even if it's just two bedrooms, some of those people are going to have kids. This isn't just, you know, put in the houses and everybody's going to get rich from the taxes. We're going to be out so much more in taxes, putting in the infrastructure for these units. It needs to go slow and do a lot of planning. We can't just jump into it. He was talking about being consistent with the lifestyle, I almost choked on that one. I mean, I'm at Homer Creech's house. I love that house. It was built in the 1950's. Up and down the road, my neighbors, I might not know all their names, but I know a lot of their faces, I know a lot of their houses. This is not consistent with the neighborhood. Now, I don't know if it has to be, but I sure wouldn't use that for a selling point if I was trying to get this thing put in. It is not consistent. And there's another thing, I don't know if it was on purpose or not, but it really has been mischaracterized as far as the watershed. I don't know if any of y'all know this little area, but like I said, I live on that property right there, you can see the edge of it. And Creech Road is the top of my property, the rest of it is straight down from there. My property goes downhill. So this whole unit right here is going to be uphill from me and it has taken up a lot of the arable land. So what that means is all that parking lot is going to shed water right off. That means there is going to be a lot of runoff from that area. Now, maybe some of it is running this way, but a whole lot of it is running that way.
Okay, Mrs. Cook, thank you very much.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just wanted to point out those few things that hadn't been talked about.
Thank you, thank you for jumping in.
Okay.
And hang on just a second. You know, the rule is, no, Mrs. Cook, you're good, just we had several people raising their hands to talk. And technically, we are required to sign up in advance. I made an exception for Mrs. Cook. I can make another exception, but I can't make 10 other exceptions. Well, no, we won't have flexibility. We wanted to use good judgment. We've got a lot of hands going up, a lot of people have important things to say, but let me say again, this will eventually go to the planning commission. It may go there next. They listen to people talk as well and then it comes back to the council. One of the possible outcomes here tonight is that the council member makes a motion and then is voted in to keep this hearing open so we can gather more information. So this is not the last chance to have some input, but I would ask everybody to be conscious of their neighbors and their neighbors' time and staff time. That being said, are there some people in the audience who have something else to say than too much traffic and too bad? We don't want to be repetitive. And now we've got three people have raised their hands, one who's already spoken. We probably won't go back to you. You were a good speaker and you made a good message, but we might open the floor, I'm going to say if we can hold it to one or two more people to testify, okay? Now, we've got four people with their hands up, okay? It's making it difficult on me to be fair to everybody and respect everybody's time.
I would not know.
Okay, okay, hang on, it's hard for me to hear you from down there. The first two people to raise their hand, I'm going to take those two people, as long as it's not repetitive and you can keep your comments to three minutes. Please, the two people to raise their hands first, if you would address, if you would come to the podium, please, and state your name and address and we'll be glad to hear your comments, sir. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
My name is Nolan Saunders. I've lived at 1000 Creech Road. Next week will be 48 years and it's been a great place to live. Single-family housing, we know our neighbors, we interact with our neighbors, and it's been a good place. We do not need this kind of development. And I know there's one sitting over there where the concrete plant is, I've seen the rezoning signs, so I imagine that's going to be another cluster of apartments. And all of those are going to dump back on Creech Road to go into Raleigh. And we do not have enough road there to do it. I mean, I set up your board of adjustments for several years and I've heard the different arguments and everything. And I know it's not easy for y'all to make your decision, but think about us that have been here 40, 50 years and we get somebody with a whole pocketful of money come down here, 30 minutes after they get here, they say, hey, we can sell a bunch of houses here. That's not what we need. We need things that build our community. And this is not what we'll get with this. I'm not talking about people, I'm not criticizing the residents, it's just that there's not been enough thought put into it for us to have a development like this. I appreciate what y'all are doing, but let's do better. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Yes, and last speaker tonight will be right there. Yes, ma'am, you hit your hand up quickly, we'll make an exception if you would state your name and address.
Emily Scott, 796 Hay River Street in Garner. It's more of a question and a request about the greenway that's at the back of the neighborhood, if that could be looked into. Where is that going? What does it connect to? What's that going to look like?
We won't be addressing, we won't be answering that.
I know, just something to consider as you're looking at this continued.
That's a good question. And again, as it goes to the planning commission, there'll be more opportunity to look at it. You can call to the planning staff up here and get copies of these documents and get more information as we go. You're asking good questions.
Right, thank you, that's it.
Thank you, thanks for being brief. Okay, so normally that would conclude the speaking on this and we'll be looking for a motion. Did you have something else you wanted to add, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I can respond to a couple of the issues that were raised, real quick.
Yes, if it's real quick.
It is. So the first thing is with regard to the entrance on the Creech Road, as you can see, there are three, as we call them, paper roads leading from Creech Road down to this property. We looked at all three of those as possible entrance sites. You know, speaking with Ms. Blackman from the beginning of this project, the intent was to not use the one that we're using, but the other two are too dangerous to be used as actual entrances because of the slope of the road as it goes through there. As one of the neighbors testified, pulling out of the existing apartments, you just can't pull out because of the slope of the hill. So that would have been our preference to use that as an entrance, but it's just too dangerous to use. So the one in the middle unfortunately is the only one that actually can be used. The other issue is with regard to widening the road for the turn lane. So as you can see, the actual width of Creech Road, the paved width is significantly smaller than the right-of-way. So it is entirely possible to add a third lane without taking any easements or we are not, we don't believe that there's any reason to take easements from any of the property owners along that. There's no need to take anybody's property, there's plenty of right-of-way to build in.
Thank you, sir, thank you.
I want to follow up on that too because I'm just a messenger.
We'll have some other questions, it's just what we'll do is, you know, we'll go back and ask council members if they have any other comments or questions before we ask for a motion.
I'm going to make a motion, I was just going to address the right-of-way and Creech Road folks, don't get mad, but if you look at the map and you see the black lines, there is DOT right-of-way over there and they can, you know, it's DOT right-of-way, so it could be a third lane added with the right-of-way on both sides. I'm just a messenger, don't get mad at me, there's right-of-way out there. It exists. Yes, it does exist on Allstate Road, so it is out there, so a third lane could be done. So it's there if it ever had to be done.
And if anybody had the money to do it.
That's right, that's the key, Mr. Mayor, you're right, if we had the money to do it.
Thank you, good observation. Any other observations or comments from council? Okay, what we'll do then, we will officially close this public hearing and then what we'll do now, I'll ask the council members if there's a motion in reference to referring this case to the planning commission.
I have a comment. I mean, I think the conversation by most of council members tonight in public equity is there's so much development in this part of Garner that needs to be considered in aggregate. I think from a transportation standpoint, from school standpoint, there's a limited capacity for, of infrastructure here and we need to figure out what that full build-out looks like and see if it's even feasible to do. And if it's necessary to, there to be a more coordinated effort, we need to investigate that, but I think the days of looking at each project in a box, we can't afford to do any longer. So I think we need to, to rush this through to planning commission is counter to what we've been trying to do is get the most polished project. But the polished project, polished project doesn't make a great, great region, right? So it's just, I think we need more time to get these other, work with our planning department and look at what all this looks in aggregate. That's my comment.
Mr. Vance, do you have a comment?
I'd echo what Mr. Dellinger said, looking at it in aggregate because of the size of the developments that are coming in and how quickly they are coming in, I think it's imperative that we do try to look at it from a holistic point instead of individuals at this point. That, I think we just need to think it through as to how we can best do that.
So is there a motion to hold this public hearing open, gather more information specifically about transportation and the ability to coordinate and partner with other developers and then review this again at a future date? Is there a motion to hold this public hearing open or is there a motion to refer it to the planning commission?
I'll make the motion to hold it open, I just don't know, I think to a date certain is the ideal motion to make and I'm not sure, I guess it's a planning department conversation on, and council, and I don't know how long it would take for us to sort of engage in that broader conversation of looking at, it's probably a couple of work session effort and, we could always do it, refer it again, we could, you know, to another date certain on the calendar. I mean, my knee-jerk would say first meeting in April or second meeting in March, but I don't know what the timeline.
Let me consult our attorney regarding the legality and the technicalities of holding a public hearing open to a future date. I don't think we have to set the date tonight, but it has to be for a specific purpose and a reason. Could you explain what our options are tonight?
Yes, so you have two options. You can hold it open for specific information that you want and you can either leave that open-ended or if you do a date certain, then it doesn't have to be re-advertised and public notice doesn't have to go out again. So that's really the only difference with the date certain. But I'm not sure I understand, you want to look at this aggregate, there's projects in different stages in the pipeline, so what is the timeline for where you want to decide which project has advanced to what level?
Well, I'll suggest we go at least to the second meeting in April because as we pointed out at the last meeting when Mr. Treisman pulled up everything on, related the projects that are on Creech Road, some have been approved and some have not, is that the minimal road improvements that are going to be done. There's one that would involve a realignment of Creech Road, but the fact is it realigned it, but then it doesn't connect back in because there's a proper house on there, so there's pluses and minuses of that. So I would suggest and Mr. Dellinger would amend his motion to the second meeting in April, April 16th, and we can reconvene then and see where we stand. I'll second that motion.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so Mr. Dellinger has made a motion that we hold this public hearing open until April 16th while we gather more information about transportation options, including possible partnerships, cooperation with other developers to maintain more and better transportation options over there. So it is continued, the motion is to continue to a date certain, gather information. The motion was made by Mr. Dellinger, it was seconded by Mr. Singleton, okay? So I'll call for a vote and I think a voice vote is okay here. All of those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by nay. Hearing none is unanimous, the motion has been made and passed to postpone until April 16th, I think it was.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay. So that concludes the hearing on the Creech Road apartment project and we will go on with some other new and old business committee reports, manager reports, council reports, and anyone who wants to stay all night with us, that's fine. If you need to leave now, that's understandable and we won't consider it impolite.
We have a recess.
Wanted to thank you ladies and gentlemen for being responsible and taking your time of this.
Thank you. There's a motion for a five-minute recess and then we'll come back in time. We're not, do not leave the building, council members, do not leave the building. Five minutes. Five minutes.